Go ahead.
All right, the Committee on Finance and Law will come to order, calling the role Mr. Souza.
Present.
And Mr. Fiori is present. Going through the agenda, there are no student activities to be reimbursed in this. Number two, we have memorandum of legal services on our new contract for special education services. The month of November of 2021 is the amount of $5,277.63, and year-to-date is $11,909.81.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with this memo. It's just an update on legal services for special education. Move, receiving place on file.
Chair seconds, all those in favor.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. Now, the biggie. Bills payable on the warrant for fiscal year '21, $11,128.9, and for fiscal '22 is $760,855.58.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Moynihan, welcome. I just have two questions. On page three on FY '22, and that would be the Arnold Gymnastics, and I know that they do our gymnastics. Is that $5,000, is that for the year, for a quarter, for a half a year?
That is our gym rental for November through February.
So it's half, almost the whole season?
Well, through March, yes, but, yes, exactly, March will start the spring, you're right.
Right, start the spring, yeah. Oh, wait, that's beautiful, that's a reasonable rate, thank you. And one more question on page seven. Pola, Pola Construction, what's that, the SIR funds, is that for HVAC or?
Pola Construction is a local vendor that has been helping us constructing at Martin School walls, because we had to demolish the accordion walls, and so these are the-
They're solid walls.
Correct.
In those classrooms, towards the front of the building, they had those dividers that were falling apart.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The ones that Mr. Souza kicked when he was a student, yeah.
I also pushed him quite a bit and rocked him. That's probably why they're just about destroyed now, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you're exactly right. On the warrant bills payable, FY '21, $11,120.89, and FY '22, $760,855.58.
All right, the chair seconds. No further discussion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. And facilities update, this is Moynihan and Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori. At the Mulcahy School, we had a building committee meeting this morning, and we are continuing to chop away at the punch list, and there are some issues that we've been working with our OPM and our vendors through the project to resolve those issues. So we are hoping to have everything, of course, resolved by the end of the project. The pre-K playground will be put off until the spring, so we will be constructing that. And then the alternative high school, we are just about done with the, well, they are just about done installing the windows at the school, so all of our windows are in the building, and now they are just finishing up the cookwork, and then, of course, constructing their punch list, so we can chop away at that punch list. So we're seeing the end of the road for the alternative high school's window project. And I'm sorry, we still have the, we are waiting for the doors, which are coming in by the end of January. And that concludes the facilities.
Just want to make sure the chairman has the ability to write all that down.
I do.
He's pretty, yeah, he's done this before.
All right. The pleasure of the committee.
Receiving place on file.
Chair seconds, all those in favor.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted.
Motion adjourned.
Chair seconds, all those in favor.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and we're out of here.
Call the meeting to order, if you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? What's this saying?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessing on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community, and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Do you want the roll call next?
If you'd like to do a moment of silence now.
Okay. I'd like to have a moment of silence for members, former members of our school department, who have recently passed. The first one is Edmund J. Hill, who died on December 1st, longtime math teacher at Taunton High School, who had the most wonderful sense of humor. My kids, who had him, always talked about how much he made them laugh, and yet he managed to teach them a lot of math as well. He was just a wonderful member of the faculty, loved by all, and our thoughts and prayers go out to his family and his children and his grandchildren. And there's a service for him on Saturday, if people would like to attend in Norton at the funeral home over there. The second one is, it is with great sadness that I announce that we lost a member of this school committee on the 6th of December. Oddly enough, it was the same day that Peter Core was having his funeral, another longtime member of the school committee. Joe Martin, and we have a memorial set up for him here, was just an outstanding member of this community, gave an awful lot to his students. His family was basically all teachers, his son works as a truancy officer, sometimes with the school department, all dedicated to children, just as he went into, you know, older students as he was. He worked for years at Bridgewater State College, doing math, teaching math over there. Very devoted and dedicated teacher. I can remember him telling me, he would write up all the notes he had for any math class. He mimeographed them all off when he used to do that, then he folded them, and he did the whole nine yards, gave all the students the packets, so they could have all the notes. And he was so disappointed at times when, all he said to the kids, please get a three-ring binder, poke the holes, and put the papers in there, so you have the notes, and some kids never did that, so he tried so hard to do those things. But it's a tremendous loss for all of us. He was a great colleague, had a great sense of humor, was kind to all of us. He never got rattled about anything, and what a treasure he was to have in this community, and I'm sure all of us are blessed that we knew Mr. Martin. So we'll have a moment of silence for these two individuals, and after that, if anybody would like to say something in addition about Joe, they're more than welcome to. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if you'd like to just call on people that might want to add something.
Happy to.
Well, I mean, I'm still in shock myself personally. Joe, you know, when I first was elected to the school committee in 2010, 2009, and then I sworn in in 2010, Joe was my junior year Algebra II teacher at Taunton High. And when I first came on the committee, Joe Martin was known to me for 30 years as Mr. Martin. And when I came on the committee, I said, "Mr. Martin, good to see you," and everything, and he says, "I'm your colleague now. You can call me Joe." And it took me about six or seven meetings before I finally was able to call him Joe, but it took me a long time. I have the utmost respect for that man. Not only was he a wonderful math educator, and I think that's where I got my engineering background, or my building blocks for my engineering background was Joe and his colleagues, but he was just a great colleague and a great community person, and it's a deep loss, and it's one that I don't think I'll probably ever get over.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Joe was a dedicated servant to our community, committed and dedicated to our kids, our family, his colleagues, and of course, his family and friends. And while we are saddened, and it's a great loss to our community, I think we can be comforted by how much, or what a positive impact he had on the lives of so many people here, and the lasting legacy that he will always have here in Taunton. Thank you. Mr. Fiori. Mr. Fiori.
Well, I knew Joe since he did his practice teaching at Taunton High School. My sophomore year there, his senior year at Bridgewater, so I go back over a half-century with him, and I think he could barely shave when he was doing his student teaching, but certainly watched him mature over the years. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is that he was, one reason that he rose to being assistant superintendent was that he was a pioneer with computers, and actually, his teaching at Bridgewater began with teaching computer languages and not just math. And he was a really exceptional individual all along. And then, the last 20 years, being a colleague, between him being the assistant super and then a fellow member of the school committee, saw a whole other side of him. It became much more personal, and it really leaves a hole in my life.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori, Mr. Palowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I could never call him Joe, he's always Mr. Martin to me, no matter how many times he told me to call him Joe. When I was in high school, he was, and he was the assistant superintendent, he was our key club advisor. So he was, you know, one of the role models in my life, and he illustrated and showed to us how important services, you know, to your community and to the school system. You know, so we can't even say that we've got big shoes to fill, because you couldn't possibly replace what he's meant to this city and to Taunton Public Schools. So if we can conduct ourselves with a fraction, and I use the math term on purpose for him, of the intelligence, empathy, and just kindness that he's conducted himself on this board, then we'll be successful. So he'll be greatly missed, and, you know, best wishes and prayers to his family.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I knew when John made the phone call to the school committee members on the afternoon of the burial of our colleague Peter Core, I just had a sense that what John had to say was about Joe and not good news. He, I met him when I first came to the school board, and now I'm leaving the school board, and propitious, I guess, because he's left at about the same time. So I have two anecdotes. One is that Joe, and he made sure he showed me his feet. He celebrated the warmth and promise of spring by taking his socks off. And he made it a point to show me his foot without a sock, and greeted the winter by putting his socks on. And so that was a running joke between us, and at the proceedings for Joe this weekend, his wife reminded me that that was something that made him chuckle. The other anecdote is that our students, our middle school students a few years ago, before COVID, were having a math competition at the Friedman Auditorium, and Joe was, I think, Greg DeMello was sitting with me, someone else, and Joe was sitting behind us, and you know how complicated the math is. I mean, our young people don't think it's complicated, but the grownups think it's complicated. So the question would be posed to them, the algorithm to solve presented, that's a word I learned from Joe, algorithm. And he'd sit back there, and he would be the first to come up with an answer, and while I'm just trying to figure out what the question was, Joe would already have the answer at his fingertips and shared that. So I'm going to miss his quick wit, his wonderful laugh, his good advice, and his wisdom. Joe never had anything to say unless it was profound and important. He wasn't the kind of person who just talked for the sake of, but always had something important to say. So Joe, gonna miss you.
Thank you. Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. So as my colleagues have said, there's still more to be said. Joe was a colleague, a friend, that had a certain demeanor about him. His delivery was always calm and cool and centered, and he was a subject matter expert in just about everything he talked about. So in the four years that I've served as a school committee member, I've probably learned 20 years of knowledge and compacted in those four years. And of course, not only did we lose him at Taunton Public Schools, but at the Bridgewater State University, where I also work by day, and it's a great loss there, because he was there for, I think, almost 40 years. And all I can say is that Joe was a person I want to look up to, and, you know, hope to be half as good a person as he was as a school committee member, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Almeida, I couldn't tell if you had your hand up or not, I'm sorry. Didn't want to skip over you.
Well, I've had the opportunity to work with Joe for over 36 years, not only as a school committee person, but when he was superintendent, assistant superintendent, and when he was technology director. Also, I had the pleasure of having Joe as a neighbor, and most of all, as a friend. Joe and Diane are wonderful people. Joe will certainly be missed. I always remember at Christmas time, I'd have a problem putting my Christmas lights up, and the first person that was there to help me was Joe. I can't say enough about what a wonderful man he is, and I will always cherish his friendship.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I first got to meet Mr. Martin back in 1998. I was actually participating in a graduate school program, and part of the requirement was to interview the business manager. So when I just set up an interview with Andy Zee and met with Mr. Martin for about two hours, and let me tell you, when I left that meeting, my head was spinning, I had a migraine, and I remember thinking to myself, how can anyone balance three different fiscal budgets in the millions and not make a mistake, and make it look so easy? And I remember saying to myself, I would never want that man's job. In 2001, when I was appointed principal at the Friedman Middle School, I got to see a different side of Joe. That's when I got to know Joe the man. And I would describe those more like Tuesdays with Maury, because as great as a mathematician and administrator as Joe was, he was an incredible human being. And Joe always reminded me about the different stages of life. Before you get married, you have a little bit of money in your pocket, you buy a car, and that car is spotless. Then life changes. You get married, you have kids, maybe you have a home, and the car's not always so clean anymore. But then you start to focus on your lawn. And then you get older, life changes, and all of a sudden, your lawn's not as green as it used to be, because the kids consume your time. So Joe always had a great way of reminding you to maintain that work-life balance. And Joe was a great example of somebody who was super talented, well-respected throughout the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials. He could have rode his own ticket to so many different communities. But Joe always reminded me, and reminded others, that that came at a price. Now, the price of not being in the community that you love, and the price of not being able to attend events in the school system that your children attend, in the school system that you work in. So Joe just had a very level-headed way about him, always loved to pass on his knowledge, super, super, super detail-oriented, for anyone who's ever had the pleasure of tailgating with him. You didn't have to worry about a thing when you went to one of those Patriots games, because he had it all covered, and nobody ever worried, because, you know, Joe Martin was on top of it. And towards the end, I got to spend some time with Joe, towards the end, and he was always very mindful of, you know, don't wait, you know, don't put off today what you can do tomorrow, because tomorrow is never guaranteed. So to the Martin family, to the Taunton community, and to all those that Joe impacted, from our Taunton Public School family to yours, you know, a heartfelt gratitude, and our dearest and sincerest condolences, because this community lost a great man, and it'll be hard to replace what Joe has given to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. At this time, I would like to turn the gavel over to Mr. Souza to chair his last school committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, greatly appreciate that. I'm not going to tear up, I promise.
I told him, you better not cry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty. Mr. Palowski.
Present.
Mr. Fiori.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Mrs. Almeida.
Present.
And Chairman Souza.
Present. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Moving on to item B, approval of the minutes for August 1st and August, excuse me, here we go.
Our approval.
December 1st and December 8th. Motion made in second, and all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item C, Student Advisory Committee Report. We have us, with us this evening, Nicole Drake, I say, Hector Aponte. Avicelli Aliseya. Thank you. I was promising I wouldn't mess that up tonight. Nicole, welcome.
Thank you. Things are going very well at Taunton High right now. As we're approaching winter break, we have a lot of exciting things going on. Last week, we had the chorus concert, and the mixed 8th and 9th grade choir performed along with concert choir and select choir. It was a beautiful performance, and we're also looking forward to the band concert next Tuesday. Taunton High Drama Club just held auditions for The Wizard of Oz, and they just released the cast list for the upcoming play. We also had DECA hold mock districts last Tuesday, and it gave members an opportunity to practice for the upcoming district's competition in January. It was a very successful event. We also have our winter sports season off to a successful start. We've already had several wins already from the wrestling team and the boys' and girls' basketball teams. Students are very excited for break right now, and we've had a few things around the school to help everyone get in the holiday spirit, and really give students a thing to be excited about before break. So the first thing is we planned a winter-themed Spirit Week next week. So Monday, we have a flannel-themed day, Tuesday's Holiday Sweater Day, Wednesday is Holiday Headwear Day, and Thursday is Holiday Pajama Day. This morning, we also held a fundraiser. The class council sold hot chocolate in the morning before school to raise money for our senior class. We're also selling candy grams, where you can write messages to your friends and have the messages delivered to them with candy. That's another fundraiser for our class. And another new change around our school is that we implemented a new pass system, which has really helped keep the hallways and bathrooms less crowded and more organized. So each house has like a different colored pass that students can get from their teachers if they need to leave class at all, and it's really helped to keep kids out of the hallways and learning in class. Another great thing we have going on is, next to the Tiger Shack, we have something called The Little Closet run by Mrs. Sullivan, and it's a great thing where kids can donate any clothing items they don't need, and kids that may need clothes around this time of year can go pick them up in The Little Closet, and it's a really great opportunity for them. And that would conclude my report for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole, and just for the record, thank, these kids are our future, and as you notice, she doesn't have a ton of paper in front of us, everything's on her phone, and she reads those documents, or that document which she prepared ahead of time, right from her phone, so that's awesome. I truly appreciate that. And from the school committee, to your family and to your colleagues, happy holidays and happy new year.
Happy holidays.
Any questions of the committee? Chair wants to, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had the opportunity to serve as a judge in the districts, and I can tell you that our 8th graders or 9th graders, 9th graders were there, a very, very talented group of students. So we have a lot to look forward to nationally, to win a lot of competitions, so good work by everyone involved, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor.
Aye.
Appalled, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is public input. Donna, do we have anybody for public input?
No public input.
Thank you. No public input this evening. Next item on the agenda is Junior Achievement of Southern Massachusetts presentation. Superintendent, Mr. Cabral.
Well, I made a mistake. I'm not as prepared as I should have been, because I didn't write down all the names of the individuals who'll be participating in this presentation today. But I will just say this, back in 1998, oh, sorry, 1988, when I was an 8th grader in middle school, my 8th grade social studies teacher participated in a program called Junior Achievement. And it was during that program or during that class, which was, I think, once every five days, once every six days, we participated in a stock market project. So let's fast forward to when I was the assistant superintendent of Finance and Operations, and a gentleman by the name of Will Mandanka recruited me to be a mentor here at E. Pole and at Bennett School, where I participated in the elementary school version of Junior Achievement. Let's fast forward to 2021, and here we are in JA. The programs that they are offering and the ability of this program to adapt to the times is amazing. Anyone who knows young adults in high school or in college, there is a thirst, there is an appetite for young adults to learn about marketing and to learn about investing. And what's great about Junior Achievement is that they bring business leaders into our schools at no cost to the school department, business leaders who also serve as mentors, who are very passionate about this work, and are able to really customize programs. So we have several different presentations, the different pieces of the presentation. We have Jeffrey Pelletier, who is the president of the Southeastern Chapter of Junior Achievement. He is accompanied with several of his colleagues. We also have two principals who are with us, Mr. Delaney and Principal Holcomb. And we also have business partners, Will Mandanka and Michelle Roberts from Bristol County Savings Bank, as well as students. So I'm going to stop talking, and I'm going to turn things over to them, because as you can tell, I am very, very excited about the potential of this program in our schools. But let's hear what they have to say, more importantly, let's hear from the kids, and let's hear from the adults who are doing this work in our buildings, who are not kids. So Jeff, please, we'd love to hear from you this evening.
Jeff, come on up, I don't know who's going first, you'll have to tell us your order, and I'll just turn the floor over to you.
Great. Thank you so much, thank you very much, Superintendent Cabral, and Will Mandanka, the vice chair of our board of directors, and I know a huge part of the community here at Taunton. You've got to kick things off first.
And any of the speakers that are going to the podium, feel free to take your mask off so there's clarity of the audio.
Appreciate that, thank you, Jeff. And good evening, Mayor Sean O'Connell, Superintendent John Cabral, members of the Taunton School Committee, and before, just would like to offer my condolences to your loss as a school committee and our loss as a community. I was mentioning in the back of the room, I was part of the crew that first started, before I graduated Taunton High School, first did the first live television of the school committee meetings back in the late '80s and early '90, '91. And Mr. Martin, at the time, Assistant Superintendent Joe Martin, was a true mentor to me throughout my life in many ways, and it's a big loss to our community, and I'll never forget him. Superintendent Cabral, a huge thank you tonight for the invitation and the very kind introduction, which is very much appreciated. Our presence here and our efforts, both past, present, and going forward. Our presence here and our efforts, both past, present, and going forward, and what we'll be announcing tonight, are only possible due to the amazing support that we have received from you, so a very big thank you. I cannot thank you enough for that support. For anyone who's known me, you know, you'll attest to the fact that I have a strong passion for public education, the city of Taunton, as a proud Tauntonian, and Junior Achievement, which is an organization I've been associated with since two thousand and five, first as a classroom volunteer, member of its board, and later on as a member of the Executive Committee, as Jeff mentioned, as Vice Chair currently. Actually, I'm sure that many of you will remember, I've been here in the past to make some other presentations about Junior Achievement, but this is the most exciting one, I think, to date. Accordingly, for several years, I've concentrated many of my efforts towards bringing those three passions together for the benefit of our students here in the city. However, before I provide a brief history of JA and our city's schools, I would also like to recognize Michelle Roberts, who's here with me tonight, Executive Vice President, Chief Marketing and Community Relationship Officer at Bristol County Savings Bank. I am honored to be part of the Bristol County family, as they have provided me with this tremendous opportunity to be here, not only tonight, but with JA and our community and other organizations. And Michelle and the bank have been amazing supporters of the JA organization of our particular franchise, JA Southeastern Mass and Taunton Public Schools, so a very big thank you to Michelle Roberts and to Bristol County Savings Bank. JF Southern Mass covers twenty-one communities in a region with various programs, several of which you'll hear about tonight, but with respect to Taunton, our efforts, in one way or another, go back over a decade, and truly, uh, yours truly, and several other volunteers have taught classes over the past decade or so in many of our elementary schools, including those I had the pleasure of teaching back at the Edmund Hatch Bennett School, with my two daughters who are still there. Even our own Superintendent Cabral has did a classroom volunteer mentor, as he mentioned, including an awesome program one year at the Bennett School with a very successful lemonade program that we at JA were extremely proud of, of that, and I know he was proud of, because he was posting a lot about that program, and those kids didn't forget that, so thank you. We've also been at Taunton High in many classrooms, and teams from Taunton High School participated in our annual Titan Business Challenge event held annually at UMass Dartmouth with the support of the bank. However, our biggest accomplishment to date goes back to the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year, when it was back before you, and we started our work here at this particular school, at the Pole School, in a project that in two thousand seven, sixteen, seventeen, we were able to accomplish a long-time goal of reaching all students in grades K-two, four in an entire school, with JA programs, which we were able to do until the pandemic broke out. But our longstanding goal has always been to further develop our presence in this city and our impact to its students in the community, which again thanks to the amazing leadership and support of Superintendent Cabral, the great efforts of our staff that you'll hear from tonight, and generous support of the bank, has led us to tonight's review of these new programs that were recently kicked off at Taunton High School, which I was able to witness firsthand last Thursday, and let me tell you, I was blown away by the entrepreneurial spirit and the enthusiasm of those students, and at Taunton High Alternative High School, as well as the announcement of a comprehensive partnership between Taunton Public Schools and JA to the advancement of financial literacy, career readiness, and entrepreneurship. I don't want to steal the thunder of our speakers tonight. Basically, I want to let you know that we're extremely proud of the moment that we're at, that we're reaching, and as a Tauntonian, as someone who's been involved with this program, it is just like I'm on cloud nine, so trying to control it, but, uh, trying to be professional at the same time, but I, I could be jumping right now, and I know Superintendent Cabral joins me in that too. We're really excited, so my pleasure to turn it back over to, uh, where'd he go? Oh, here he is. To Jeff Pelletier, who's our president, so.
Thanks, Jeff. Very much. Thank you all. Thank you very much, Will, uh, and, uh, good evening to the school committee. Uh, it's great to be back here. It's, it's been a few years, uh, since we've been in front of, uh, the committee, and it's, it's always an honor to be here. And, uh, as Will alluded to, uh, we're really excited to be here tonight, uh, from, from everyone, from the team at Junior Achievement of Southern Massachusetts, and, uh, I'm proud to be able to speak on behalf of our team. Uh, you know, we, we're excited to be here in Taunton, uh, under the leadership of Superintendent Cabral, and the vision here, and the energy here, th- this is something that we want to be a part of. Th- this is a, a vision that we want to be involved in. This is an effort that we want to collaborate with however we can, and, uh, and so we're thrilled. We, we have a longtime partnership together, uh, but as we shared tonight, in the packets in front of everyone, there, there's also a, a new vision on the table, a deeper partnership, a more extensive partnership, uh, a partnership that'll, that will allow us to implement some programs today, while also planning some exciting efforts long-term that are still taking shape. Uh, but, but our real message, uh, tonight to the organization i- is one of, of thanks, uh, and one of excitement, you know, uh, we mean that generally. We want to be a part of what's happening here, what's happening in Taunton Public Schools. We cannot thank Superintendent Cabral enough for the vision to bring us all together, to, to bring a multifaceted partnership together, and have us get across the table and say, how do we do more for students across TPS? How, how do we do things that don't currently exist in the region? How do we do things that we all know that the students need, uh, and, and bring the business sector on board, get the community involved? Because the vision here is one of program implementation, but also community engagement, right? So how are we connecting programming to the real world, and then connecting the real world to the program? And, and so i- it is one, uh, of partnership, and while it's a, a long-term effort and vision that we're hoping to embark on, uh, tonight, uh, we also have some activities already happening. And, and so from our team at JA, we're excited to give a few updates, uh, on some things that are already going on, and, and so we are blessed at JA to have a wonderful team, and so we have, uh, two of our, members of our management team, uh, at Junior Achievement here tonight, Edith Cologne, our Director of Partnerships, and Marlena Trapani, our Regional Education Director, and so I'm going to ask each of them to come up and give a few updates on some work that is already happening, even as we're establishing this long-term vision. And so Edith, if I could ask you to come up and give a few updates on what's happening around the company program in the Titan Business Challenge as well.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. I am so very excited to really start talking about the company programs and what's really happening right now. Jeff is actually passing out some props that were, uh, the kids actually produced and sold last year. These are both from, uh, two companies, one from my bilingual company program and a regular traditional English company program, so you guys can have a feel of what they've done already, and, um, what they're going to be doing this year too, at Taunton High, Taunton Alternative and Taunton High School. So the way this company works, right, they, the, the students are given five hundred dollars seed money, okay? With that, they have to make decisions, they will buy products, so they can resell them, and if they're doing a service, they will use, they will buy, um, they will buy applications to better use, you know, to use them as tools for their websites, and so that they can re, they can sell their services. Students actually get to choose their roles. They are all, um, leader, leader roles, um, the roles are CEO, we have some CEOs here, um, they get to choose their roles. I don't choose it for them, this is their company, I just oversee it. They make all the decisions. So it's a real company, this is not a pretend, again, this is a real company. Uh, this, so we have the CEO, Marketing Director, Finance Director, we have Supply Chain Director, the Sales Director, and I think I got it right, so CEO, Finance, Marketing, Sales, and Supply Chain. So with the Supply Chain too, it's really cool, because the kids actually get to talk to vendors. They get to make phone calls, they get to get quotes, it's like which, how much are you buying, so how much can I get for this amount of t-shirts? Uh, and so they make decisions, you know, as a team too, um, but a lot of things, so when the companies do really well too, is when they are all in one page, so when they communicate one another, the more communication they have one another, and the more comfortable to get one another, the more successful the businesses are. The, uh, company programs, the kids commit to, uh, thirteen weeks, right? So it's a once a week for thirteen weeks for two hours, but it comes, it goes by really, really fast, like two hours after school, um, it seems pretty long, but it, it really isn't, it just, it just flies by. And I'm there, I have tons of fun with the students, the students have fun, it's really, really awesome to watch them becoming business entrepreneurs so early, you know, who gets to get that chance so early in high school? It's like, oh, I ran a company when I was in high school, it's pretty amazing. Um, so yeah, so with, um, thanks to Scott and his team, and, um, we actually have, uh, one company running there, the kids actually decided to sell lin, linards. Like, apparently, they are, they need that for the schools pretty soon, so they thought there was need, and they feel that need, and so they're going to, this week, pick a vendor, uh, buy from the vendor, design their linards, and resell them. With the, uh, Taunton Alternative, they decided to go, thanks to Bert and his team, um, and the support too, they are really amazing to work with, they, we have received nothing but support from both of the principals, so it's been really great, and thanks to Michael Raposa too, he's been super amazing and helpful. Uh, the kids, um, from Taunton Alternative, they decided to go for inspirational t-shirts, and then they also decided as a bonus, you know, to do a, maybe like a, a basket for the holidays, birthdays, things like that, so that, that would be like, you know, so they'll have these virtual t-shirts, like printed t-shirts, and then they'll have the option for someone to buy like a gift basket, so I thought that was really neat. Um, and the other thing that we are running this year is the Titan Challenge, I'm going to explain that very briefly. Um, so the Titan Challenge is pretty much like the company program, but it's more of a simulation game, and the kids are actually scored more on the decision-making of the company. So it's a game, a com, it's like they're running an actual company, but it's virtual, and the way that they're scored is by, um, their decision-making, and whoever scores the highest, they win scholarships, and so we're doing that this year around March in the UMass Army. That would, that would be it for me today. I am going to pass it over to my awesome colleague, Marlena. Thank you.
Um, good evening, thank you so much for having us, and thank you, Edith. Um, our classroom programs offer hands-on experiences tailored to each individual grade level, and Jeff's going to share with you a couple examples of the classroom kits that the volunteers bring in, um, when they come in to teach classes. These learning experiences introduce and build transferable skills that students can connect to their success in the classroom and later in their future career choices. Our programs are designed to empower students to understand their place in our world and how to make positive choices within their communities that will lead them to happy and fulfilled adulthood. Currently, I'm very excited to say that we will be delivering programs in every classroom at Elizabeth Pole School. Principal Annabella Jones is an enthusiastic supporter of our longstanding relationship with the school, and has been a cherished partner in this work so far this year. With her drive and vision to support us, along with support and great relationships with talented teachers and community volunteers, we will be beginning in January and working through March and beyond to ensure that every student at Elizabeth Pole benefits from these learning experiences. Taunton High School students will also be involved as part of our High School Heroes Program. We are thrilled to have the support of Jesse McPhail as we train high schoolers to deliver programs to first-grade classrooms and strengthen the relationships between students of all ages. So thank you so much for your time. I'm going to turn it back now to Jeff for a few more words.
Thank you very much, Edith and Marlena, so we just, we wanted to give a sense of a few of the efforts already underway, uh, while also, as, as we shared in the packet, talk about the long-term vision. And, and so we've got some efforts already underway, uh, we're, we're looking at, uh, a new program that we're going to put together around developing the interest in, in sophistication around investing. We're, we're looking at efforts to make sure that we are connecting, uh, Taunton students to the careers and industries of the future, and so there's a lot of exciting things on the pipeline, uh, but there's also impact happening right now. And, and so again, from, from the entire team at Junior Achievement, uh, we, we're just thrilled to be here. We are genuinely grateful for this opportunity to work together, we're grateful for the ability for, uh, to be asked to work with a superintendent like Superintendent Cabral, who has such, uh, you know, energy and vision and passion to bring resources in for the students here, uh, and, and his leadership has just been phenomenal here, to be able to work with Principals Delaney and Holcomb, and your entire teams, uh, have just been fantastic, as, as Principal Jones here, uh, at the Pole School, and part of the DNA of this effort is one of collaboration and partnership, and so, uh, we're just, just thrilled that our longtime partners in near and dear to our hearts, Bristol County Savings Bank, uh, Michelle Roberts, uh, Will Mandanka, uh, we, we have deep and longstanding connections with the bank, and so to be able to have their support, uh, already here, the, the title sponsors of the Titan Business Challenge, they're sponsoring the company program already happening, uh, I don't need to tell anyone here how invested they are in the community, and so we're just continuously honored to be collaborators and partners, uh, with the bank as well, and that, that's really how we see this, as, as bringing, uh, a whole collection of folks together, private sector, nonprofits, uh, the education community, to drive new and exciting impacts, uh, for TPS students. And so again, from, from our team, uh, we just say thank you, uh, we're honored to be here, uh, and we've seen what's been happening here, uh, and we want to be a part of it, and, and so we, we're thrilled for that and grateful for that opportunity. And, uh, I know to finish off our presentation here tonight, we are going to hear from a, a couple of our amazing students, who are already engaged in some of the programs, and Principal Delaney and Principal Holcomb as well. So, uh, thank you all so much again for the opportunity to be a part of this effort. Thank you.
Welcome, Principal Holcomb, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. So first, um, we have to thank our modest superintendent, Superintendent John Cabral, because he fosters meaningful relationships that brings all the players to the table, and if it wasn't for his ability to have those relationships, we probably wouldn't have brought together in October. In October, we all sat down together and had this discussion, Principal Delaney, Jeff Pelletier, Will Mandanka, Edith, um, Superintendent Cabral was there, obviously, and we kind of decided to, uh, take a chance, right? We saw a bunch of different programs, and, uh, what we decided upon right now was the program we see in front of us, which has been described, uh, a little bit, uh, ad nauseam. So what I decided to do was, the people have to implement these things, have been invited today. Um, one of them is Michael Raposa, he's our Curriculum Supervisor, who oversees the department where this is being held in right now, and we also have a student with us from, uh, Taunton High School too, and, uh, it's Michael Sanchez, uh, formerly also known as Mica as well. So I'd like to, if they'll listen to me, I think, uh, it's through their mouths, I think we'll hear a lot of good things, so I want to kind of yield my time, if we don't mind, over to Michael and...
Michael and Mica.
Mica. So come on up, folks. Thank you, Superintendent again, and thank you, school committee.
Welcome, Mr. Raposa and Michael.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Holcomb, thank you, Superintendent Cabral, mayor, entire school committee for having us. As Mr. Holcomb mentioned, everything was pretty much mentioned and explained about JA. What I could speak about is, um, what we've done in the past, um, as Will mentioned, we've had, uh, the Titan Challenge here at the high school for about eight years now, um, where our students have been competing over at UMass Dartmouth, and they've been very successful. And that's led us to, um, it was a couple of months ago when Scott, um, had a meeting with, uh, the admin team, and he invited Edith, and she came down, and she started talking about, uh, the company program, and what it entailed with entrepreneurship and so forth, and I'm like, well, that's, that's us, that's CT, that's our area, finance, banking, entrepreneurship, marketing, and so forth. So we chatted afterwards, and, uh, we established, uh, a relationship there, and, uh, we set up a program where she, I believe it was last week, it was the first week, she met with, uh, fifteen to twenty of our students. Their students are super interested, you know, they're highly moti, uh, highly motivated, um, she did a great job, um, we sold the program, and they, they seem very, very interested and very, uh, excited about moving forward. So when Mr. Holcomb asked us, um, to have a student represent of that program, who, first person I thought of is, who's the CEO of that program? And the CEO of the program is standing right on the side of me, so he's going to tell you a little bit about why he's excited about this program, why he, um, how he was recruited into the program, um, what he's looking forward to, and how this is going to help him move forward, wrapping up his years at Taunton High School and move forward, um, after high school.
Thank you, Mr. Raposa. Um, I want to thank you guys for bringing the program to us. I've never seen a program that gives us an opportunity to kind of have hands-on and, uh, like in our future. Um, it's, it's a very rare program where we're experiencing entrepreneurship and a business thing. Wow, very nervous, I'm not going to lie.
Doing a great job. Take your time.
It's a great program for, uh, kids who want to pursue the oper, like entrepreneurship and, um, just business career. Um, I, eh, I'm doing horrible.
Do you want to share a little bit about the company you're thinking about?
Oh, yep. So we're, um, focusing on linards, because, uh, Taunton High is going to have us wear our school IDs, just so, uh, security and teachers just recognize us, uh, in case we're in the halls wandering and stuff. So, um, I'm thinking of naming So I'm thinking of naming it like We Are The Future. So, you know, it revolves around everyone in the school, not just seniors and stuff. It's the eighth graders, the freshmens and et cetera. Oh, great. I was chosen to CEO because I do have a brand of myself, which we are not going to speak on right now. But they see the drive I have and the motivation I have. I'm usually good with speaking in public, but, you know, of course, today I'm not doing very good. But it's, I do see potential in it and I think it's a very, very great program to continue on. I wish this program was brought when I was a freshman or even an eighth grader. I do want to recruit younger students. So far, we have sophomores, juniors, seniors. I do want to recruit a lot of younger ones just because right now they're just probably like, ah, we hate school. I don't want to go to school. But once they see that school's end, then they're going to see that they want to, you know, they want to have an experience in a program like this. Thank you.
Nice job, Michael. And I've been doing this for 12 years in public speaking. I'm still learning on public speaking. So don't ever, don't ever, don't ever be afraid. You did a great job. Principal Delaney, welcome.
Thank you. You did a great job, by the way. Well done. I'd rather listen to kids all day than adults. Okay? So that's the truth, by the way. But thank you for having us tonight. With me are two seniors at the Alternative High School. We have Abigail Pedro, who is our CEO. And we have Jackie Vizio, who is the CFO. And they volunteered to come tonight to tell a little bit of how we got started last Friday. So we had our first session of JA last Friday. And I can tell you, from the energy from the JA staff to the energy of the kids that day, and as a principal, I get out of there fast. They don't want to listen to me. The energy was going for two hours, okay? And again, I'm not going to steal this on the, the ladies are going to talk about what went on. How I gauge that as a principal, and Mr. Holcomb can appreciate this, Mr. Reposa, Mr. Cabral is a former principal, in the lunchroom after this session, okay? In the lunchroom, as principals, supervisors, you pick up a lot of stuff in the lunchroom. You listen, right? You build relationships in the lunchroom. The lunchroom energy after our JA session was outstanding. And as I was walking around, there was not one, there was not one negative thing said about that two-hour session. That tells me, that gives me a gauge of, guess what? We started off on the right foot. And the reason we started off on the right foot is the energy from JA. They're outstanding and certainly because of our students. And I'm going to let them take, take over right now.
Hello, I'm Jackie Vizio. Like you said, I am the CFO, which is like the financial director.
Pull the mic down in front of you, Edith, so we can hear you. Thank you.
So I think that this is a great program. It's like a great opportunity for kids because I feel like, like obviously we get the budget. And a lot of kids around this age are more of like, oh, well, I have a car now. I have to pay off my car, like the insurance, everything like that, or even working on getting an apartment. They don't have a lot of money to put into a business that they don't know will fully work. So it's like, this is a great opportunity for people because like, I don't know, you get to do whatever you want. I don't see this as like school. It's not really like a class. And I feel like people are like more excited for this. Like, we made a group chat like for our group. And it's like people are working on it outside of class. They don't see it as like just, oh, a group project, oh, we have to get this done. Like, no, it's like, oh, like let's actually do this. This is fun. Like, I think it's really awesome.
I agree wholly with what Jackie said. Some other things are, I'm incredibly grateful to have this program here at the Taunton Alternative High School. I think it gives students a real chance to be independent and to have this sort of time to play with ideas about going into the workforce. These aren't things that you normally get to explore in a normal school curriculum, in my opinion. I feel like it gives just this more in-depth, hands-on sort of example of working with money, working with business ideas, just all of these concepts that you can read in a book and you can get these ideas, but you don't really know what it feels like to be in that position to, you know, get these, get hands-on with it. And so that's something I really appreciate. It also, like Edith said, it is like a real business. They respect us enough as students and respect us enough as people who are going to be in the workforce, people who are going to be full adults and everything. They give us this independence to direct ourselves and to like, you know, have that independence that you don't get in a, in a normal like sit-down-in-a-classroom sort of thing, you know? It's really like, it feels really respectful in that sort of way. In the way that these people like respect us enough and trust us enough to give us money to start a brand that, like Jackie said, we normally wouldn't even think about. We wouldn't even have the time to think about these sort of things where especially in the alternative high school, we are all working. We have jobs, we're working, we're focused a lot on this next part of life without like having time to think of even further beyond in the future where we could potentially be business owners, potentially work in a business. And that I also appreciate, like just being able to try something new and to have people who respect us while doing that.
More importantly, thank you, thank you for the presentation. You get to make your own decisions. And I think that that's, it's just wonderful. Thank you all for coming and everyone, all the presenters, thank you. It was very enlightening. Any questions from my colleagues? Ms. Dougherty.
All right, not so much your question, but a comment first. Thanks to the JA team for staying the course through the pandemic, coming back. First presentation was a few years ago and I was impressed at the time. And it seems that it has grown significantly. I, I'm particularly impressed by the remarks of the students because I think that it is their opinion that matters the most. And to hear these young persons talk about being respected, feeling independent, having fun in school, dealing with real-world application and getting ready for what they consider to be their lives after. So I want to say, if I were wearing a hat, I would say hats off to you. It's an old-fashioned saying, you know? Yeah, David gets a kick out of it. But I really, I appreciate everything that you're doing and continue on. And to our students, continue on as well. We have your back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Real world, I think, is the key on that too. That was a great comment. Ms. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for the presentation. I just have one question. How many hundreds of thousands of dollars do you need to invest in Bitcoin so we can make real money? Who wants to be the CEO? So no, I really appreciate the enthusiasm that I see in the room tonight. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, Ms. DeMello. Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We see an awful lot of public demand for real education and financial literacy. I mean, there are things that we need to incorporate into our regular curriculum. But I thank God for organizations like Junior Achievement that are showing us how to do it. They're getting enthusiasm that are really organizing and educating our students. And all I can say is, give us more.
Exactly. Anything else from my colleagues? Mr. Polowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Thank you all for the great presentation. I'm really excited to see this kind of work being done in the schools. And I think Edith said it best. If these kids can accomplish this stuff while they're in school, if they can actually run a business and feel that feeling of somebody respecting them enough to give them that responsibility to take that on, imagine what they're going to be able to accomplish when they're adults and they're out in the real world. And I think that that's the most valuable thing we can give our students while they're in school. So as my colleague says, hats off. Thank you.
Any other questions, any other comments from my colleagues? I just have one thing that I'll let the superintendent close. Back, I don't know if any of you young people know, but some of my science colleagues that are here, there's a company called Scale Composite. Scale Composite built the Spaceship One rocket that goes up into the outer atmosphere and to gravity, weightlessness. And the owner of Scale Composite, the founder was, is a guy by the name of Burt Rutan. He was a great aircraft designer, engineer, aerospace engineer. And I had an opportunity to meet Burt Rutan back in the middle 90s, early 90s. And Burt Rutan always said, and one of the comments that stuck with me for a long time was, my best engineers are the engineers that fail. And the reason for that is, is because on those lessons, they always learn something. And they become, they come back stronger and better, become better engineers. But in this particular case here, you come back by junior achievement. And I can see the same parallel. You have to, you have to make mistakes, you have to learn, learn. And as you're learning, you're able to adjust and become successful. And that's what this is all about. And I have great hope for the junior achievement because financial literacy, as my colleague said, is the hope for the future. And we need it desperately. So congratulations to you all and thank you all the adults. I know all the adults that are involved. As far as the business partners, thank you. Junior Achievement adults, thank you. And students, keep up the good work. And I'll let Mr. Cabral close.
So I've heard we have a COO and we have a CFO. I didn't hear anybody say CEO, Chief Encouragement Officer. And I'm the CEO of the Taunton Public Schools. So I'm going to encourage you to not allow any adult or anyone ever tell you you can't do something. And when an adult or someone in your life tells you you can't do something, use that as fuel to prove them wrong, to achieve your dream. So sometimes I feel as adults, we get in the way of our creative learners. What I also enjoy about this program is that it aligns perfectly with our strategic plan. Now, community engagement and curriculum, hands-on curriculum. And with the shift we're making in the Taunton Public Schools to more phenomenon-based curriculum, to more hands-on-based curriculum, this program ties in perfectly. And I think of what Mr. DeMello just mentioned. Does anybody have $48,000 to invest in the Bitcoin? Well, the programs such as this existed when we were younger, we would know that through dollar-cost averaging, we can buy fractions of Bitcoin and over a period of time accumulate wealth. So that's what programs like this do. It eliminates barriers. It provides education and awareness so that young adults can become very prosperous adults as they move on through the Taunton Public Schools and into our community. And I know Sean O'Connell, our mayor, Sean O'Connell is very passionate about small businesses, especially women in businesses. We have sent some of our high school students to some of the seminars, some of the webinars that the city hosts. So I will be on the lookout for future webinars to share with JA and to share with the high schools so that our students, who are our future business leaders, have every opportunity and continue to have a seat at the table. So congratulations and great work. I am excited about this program.
Thank you, everyone. We'll move on with our agenda. You're welcome to leave or stay, whatever you want to do. Two-minute recess. The chair will entertain a motion. Second, second by Mrs. DeMello. All those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it. We're in recess for two minutes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is F, Evaluation of the Superintendent. And closed in your packet is the culmination of two things. We had a vote at the last meeting on each of the standards, one through four, and each of the populated items on the categories and the overall in each category. And then the, I met on last Monday with Mrs. Fagan and her and I and put together comments from each one of the committee members. And we populated the comment section in the bottom. And those are comments directly from all of you. And what we did was, Ms. Devine, who's not here this evening, and Ms. Devine, Ms. Benz, Annie Z, and Courtney? Courtney Shavz? All took the audio tape of the meeting and all of your comments and transcribed them onto a document. So we had all of the comments from all of the members. And then we used those comments and we picked comments out that populated and attributed to each section. So this is the final document of the superintendent's evaluation. And you've all had time to read it. And I think it's a, I think we did a great job. It's the same format that we used last year and the year before and the year before that. So the chair will entertain a motion to accept the evaluation of the superintendent as presented. Second. Motion made and seconded to accept the superintendent's evaluation as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Administrative Business Staffing Report.
Seated and placed on file.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. I'm going to just, we don't have a place on the agenda for communications and there's no superintendent's report this evening because of the presentation. But I just wanted to make a communication to the school committee members through the superintendent. We had a donation made today from Platinum Gaming, who's Rashid Garner from Platinum Gaming. And he's donating approximately $1,120 gift cards to Taunton Public School students. And that turns out to be 475 gift cards for all of the Parker students and 675 gift cards for all of the Martin students, $20 gift cards. So it's approximately 1,100 gift cards. And there'll be more to that. The superintendent will be talking more about that. But it just came out today, so I just wanted to let you all know about that. So $1,120 gift cards, Taunton Public School students. It's amazing. And we'll, the superintendent will talk about that in the future. And we'll send a thank you to Rashid Garner from Platinum Gaming on Woodford Street. So it's amazing. I'm going to give him a round of applause because I'm just so excited about it. I stuck on the administrative business because we don't have a communication. Subcommittee reports. Next item on the agenda, Finance and Law, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am honored to deliver this subcommittee report, but obviously deeply saddened that we lost the previous two chairs of this committee over the last few weeks. From 2014 until 2018, those two gentlemen and I were the subcommittee. And so I always think of them when I do this business. And now is a particularly touching time for me. Reviewing our agenda, the Finance and Law Committee, I met this evening myself and Mr. Susan. We did not have any student activities to replenish. We received notice of expense for special education legal services. The month of November were $5,277.63 and the year-to-date is $11,909.81. We approved two bills payable warrants, Fiscal 21, $11,120.89, and Fiscal 22, $760,855.58. And finally, Mrs. Moynihan gave us a facilities update. The Building Committee for Mulcahy School met and went over a punch list for final completion of the project. The pre-K playground is not going to be constructed until spring. At the Alternative High School, most of the windows in the window project have been installed and will be ready for the next semester. And they'll be working on a punch list for completion of that project. And the doors for that building will be in by the end of January. And that is the report. And that is the report of Finance and Law.
Which is of the committee?
Motion to accept the report.
And adopt the recommendations?
Yes.
Motion made? Second by Mr. Polowski. All those in favor?
I think Mr. DeMello has something.
I'm sorry, Mr. DeMello.
Couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. So just a quick update. On the special education memo we have, is that fiscal year '22? So that's July 1st. We're at $11,989.81 on the, so it's from July till present.
Yes, it is, correct.
And what do we have budgeted for that call?
I think it was 50.
I'm sorry?
Fifty.
Fifty thousand. Okay, so it appears we're well below our projected spend. Good, that's good news. Number two, on voucher for FY '22, I have a question regarding page number three, and it's a $5,000, it says athletic facility fees to Arnold's Gymnastic Academy. What do we pay Arnold's Gymnastic Academy for?
That is for the gym rental that we have for our gymnastics team of, at Taunton High School. So that is for the winter season, for the months of November through February, for our students to participate in gymnastics, for the gymnastics team.
They're using our facilities?
No, we are using their facility.
Where's that?
Mansfield.
Oh, in Mansfield? Okay.
That's a school, that's an exclusive gymnastics school there?
Gotcha. All right. Thank you so much. And lastly, on page, page 11, I'd like to be noted as voting present on voucher number 16935 in the amount of $999.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Donna, did you get that for the vote present on that, on that portion of the? Did you get his? Thank you, appreciate it.
Do I have to him in the motion?
No, we can just add that in. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving along, item number two under H, Subcommittee Reports. Committee of the whole, the committee of the whole met last Wednesday for the recognition of the students and staff at the Taunton Public Schools, at the high school, and we had a wonderful time. Lots of students, lots of staff recognition, and that is the committee of the whole report. Ms. Dougherty? Motion to accept, seconded. Odd discussion.
Just a question. I was delighted to be there, and I'm always glad to see students applauded, staff applauded for the fine work that they did. I noted, however, that there were no elementary presentations from any of the elementary schools. Mr. Cabral, could you just, did you save them for another time?
No, everyone who was recommended, for the most part, was, was recognized. We'll just continue to work with our principals and work with our staff to make sure that there is a broad spectrum of students and staff recognized during those events.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. New business, item I, and that is filling of the vacancy of the school committee by reason of death of school committee member Joseph M. Martin pursuant to the City of Taunton Charter, Section 21, vacancies in office of the mayor, council, and school committee. See the enclosure. After the superintendent of I had, I'm sorry, Mr. Fiore.
Well, no, I was going to make a motion.
Okay. Hold on just for a second. I appreciate that. After discussion and a legal opinion from the city solicitor, discussion with the city solicitor, the superintendent and myself, he recommended that we fill the vacancy for the last, for the end of this term until January the 3rd, when the new school committee takes over. And so the city solicitor has recommended a motion, and I will read it, and we can move from there. Motion, move a motion to elect Derek George to fill the vacancy created by the death of school committee member Joseph M. Martin pursuant to the City of Taunton Charter, Section 21, vacancies in the office of mayor, council, and school committee.
You're asking for a motion?
Yes.
I move to nominate Derek George.
Motion made and seconded to, motion to elect Derek George as presented by the recommendation of the city solicitor.
Request a roll call vote.
On a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Polowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
I believe we should be naming him, Derek George.
We can start again.
Derek George, yes.
Thank you.
Derek Michael George, yes.
Derek Michael George.
Derek, yes? You just, you saying yes to? I wasn't sure. I shouldn't do this right. Derek Michael George, yes, Mrs. Fagan.
Derek Michael George.
Oh, sorry, Mrs. Sorry, we're. Mr. DeMello?
Yes, Derek Michael George.
Oh, is Mrs. Almeida still on?
Mrs. Almeida, are you still there? I don't think so.
Derek George.
Thank you.
Okay. Chairman Susan.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Yes, Derek Michael George. And congratulations. I ask that Derek George come to the dais and have a seat with the school committee.
Well, he's going to get sworn in.
So. Just move that chair down this way. Oh, he's got to sit in the reg, okay, that's fine. So I just wanted to inform the school committee members, I have one more communication, and the other communication from the city solicitor is that unfortunately, Mr. George is here. He will be able to listen, but he won't participate until he's sworn in. He has to legally be sworn in by the city solicitor. So it's a, it's a, we had to vote this first, and then he's going tomorrow to be sworn in by the city, excuse me, not the city solicitor, the city clerk. So he'll be, he'll be just listening in now, and once he is sworn in, then he can participate fully. So moving on to business, the next item on the agenda under new business, and that is Vaccination Clinic Students and Staff Safety, Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Chairman Susan. So I believe this was a request per the school committee. So I have been in communication with Kathleen Perry and Karen Regan, the nurse manager. Mrs. Perry has provided me with a memo that I can share with the school board. So we have had several vaccination clinics in which we've had a police presence at each of those clinics. And we anticipate moving forward to ensure that our students and their families, our administrators and school personnel, and also the Department of Public Health or Brewster Ambulance, when they are working these vaccination clinics, are able to do their job with minimal disruption or without any disruption, and to make sure that our parents and students feel safe when attending our clinics, we will maintain a police presence. Should there be any potential of a protest or any indication of a protest, we want to make sure that our families feel safe. We also want to make sure that anyone who is anticipating on protesting any of the vaccination clinics do not have access or do not gain access to our school grounds. What's nice about the way our schools are situated, all our schools are set back off the road, for the exception of maybe Galligan School, which is probably our last traditional neighborhood school. So in order to gain access, you have to enter through one of the driveways. So we will make sure moving forward that there is a police presence or there is a security presence. And if the school board has any suggestions or any further ideas on how we can continue to secure and provide a safe location for families or community members to receive the vaccine, if they so wish, now, I would be all open to those suggestions to make sure that we provide that service to our community.
Any questions? Comments? Mrs. Fagan?
I just, I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral. I'm not aware of any incidents. I mean, what promulgated this?
One of the members asked for this to be put on the agenda to have an update from the superintendent just to make sure that the vaccination clinic was secure.
There hasn't been an issue, though.
I heard there was one silent protester.
Oh.
On, off-campus.
Okay.
Ms. Dougherty?
Excuse me, just by way of point of information, I've missed a beat. So we're talking about vaccine clinics. Is this past, present, going forward? Do we have vaccine clinics at our schools? What, is there a date certain? I mean, you may not want to announce that, but...
No, we are going to continue to work with our friends on the city side. We're going to continue to work.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral.
We're going to continue to work with our friends on the city side and our friends from the Department of Public Health to continue to offer vaccination clinics free to any member of the public who so wishes to have their child vaccinated or to have themselves vaccinated. And we'll make sure that it is a safe and controlled environment for anyone entering our schools.
Just if I might continue, are you anticipating that these vaccine clinics are at our schools or that there would simply, could be protests in front of our schools because this, the vaccine clinics, wherever they are, involve our children?
Yeah, there appears, I do know one of, a school not affiliated with the Taunton Public Schools, I believe, did have a demonstration or did have a show, a showing, which took away from the good work that was being done that day. I can assure you that at our sites, when we have health clinics, and we will continue to hold vaccination clinics, that we will maintain a police presence because we want to make sure that our kids, who should not be subject to any inappropriate comments from adults when they are attending a clinic with the support of their parents, under the supervision of the parents, and that's a family choice. As I continue to remind everyone, that is a discussion for families to have with their primary care physicians, get as much information as you can. And if a family chooses to use vaccine as one of the mitigations against the, against the virus, then we're going to continue to offer vaccination clinics at our sites, in our schools, for parents who choose that option.
Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mrs. Fagan, I was the member that brought it up to put it on the agenda because there was an incident that took place at a neighboring school district that, you know, it's better to be cautious than be unprepared. And that was simply the request, and I think we have everything under control, the mayor's office and Ms. Karen Pemberton do a wonderful job. So I just want to make sure they're safe and protected as long as our students and staff. Thank you.
I think we live in the, in the times today where we, we just have to be one step ahead, rather be proactive than reactive.
And Mr. Susan.
Miss Ben, ma'am.
I will just point out that we've had 19 vaccine clinics here in Taunton, many partnering with the schools, and we have had one incident at one clinic that was taken care of very quickly by the Taunton Police Department. They did a fantastic job, and so I think our clinics have been very successful, very safe, and I encourage people to come to any clinic that is held in Taunton if they would like to get a vaccine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I echo the, I echo the comments. The next item on the agenda is School Committee Remarks. I would just ask that, because of the way the agenda is, I have to present the agenda, I just ask that we move that down just before press time, and I'm going to continue on, and then we'll just go back to that at the end. So I'll just move that we, if we could just have a motion to move that to the, just before press time. All the motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Unfinished Business Action Items. Voucher addition to the special warrant, see enclosure, Superintendent Cabral.
So I believe it was Mrs. Dougherty who tabled this item and requested some additional information. So Mrs. Moynihan has... I believe it was Mrs. Dougherty who asked to table this item at our last school committee meeting, requesting additional information. So Mrs. Moynihan or Assistant Superintendent Moynihan has provided the additional information. I did reach out to each school, school committee member to answer any questions they may have had regarding this item. So I believe the item is still tabled, and only Mrs. Dougherty could take it off the table if she, if she so wishes.
If I might, I'd like to move to take the item off the tables for consideration of the committee.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
No.
Mr. DeMello votes no. The motion, the item is on the table for discussion. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the enclosure and to move to accept the recommendation of the administration.
Also move?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, accept the recommendation of the administration to add the special, the item of the special warrant. Other motion, any discussion? Other motion, all those in favor?
No.
Opposed? We have all and the rest are all ayes. Did you get that, Donna?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello votes no. The motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Action Items. We have a list of action items. Right now, I don't see any additional or to add or take off. Anyone see anything? Well, let's, action items stand, and the list stand. Next item on the agenda is School Committee Remarks. And what I'm going to do is, I was just trying to think of how I'm going to lay this out. I think what I'm going to do is have the school committee members that are leaving remarks first and then the colleagues after that. So Mrs. Almeida, do you have anything to say? I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think...
Well, I want to shout out to the school committee members the best of luck in all the deliberations that they're going to do in the coming year coming forward. I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to be able to serve the children of Taunton. It's been a learning, a privilege. Kids always come first in my opinion, and those that learn, they know that I like kids better than I do adults. So I hope that each and every student will have the same opportunities, which they do. And I am just going to give one task, final task to the superintendent. Take care of my babies. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Was that a motion, Mrs. Almeida?
That's the motion, that you take care of my babies, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. We're going to miss you. Ms. Dougherty?
Well, thank you very much. I've had a joyous 10 years as a member of the Taunton School Committee. It has been a privilege and a pleasure to serve the interests of our children, of our families, and of our staff. I guess that takes up everybody in the community. I think that over the past 10 years, there have been a lot of accomplishments under two superintendents by this, this committee, as it was previously constituted as well. I think that four of us, God rest Mr. Martin's soul, for new people on the committee is going to be a challenging opportunity for the superintendent and for the colleagues who remain to be mentors to the new folks who are coming along. I've been here 10 years, as I've said, and I, every time we have a meeting, there's something new to be learned, something to collaborate on, something to talk to the superintendent about. I think that I have strived to be a positive force in the community and a positive force for children, moving a lot of different things over the years. I think of establishing a plan for pre-K programs. That's moving along, being a part of the school building committee that constructed the Mulcahy at limited expense for the community and a beautiful school. Having a lacrosse team come to Taunton High School and Taunton Alternative High School, having coaching for change, and I could go on with the list, and all of us, and we all have to remember that we are one vote among many. And I encourage my colleagues seated and new colleagues coming along to let your voice be heard, to raise new ideas, even though you might think that they're strange and harebrained. Those new ideas coming from the committee as well as coming from the superintendent are really important. Being responsive to the community, when you have calls, as you all do, we always report to the superintendent and make sure that parents and student needs, teacher needs are addressed in a way in which they should be addressed. I've enjoyed doing all of those things. I have not been shy, as you well know, about speaking up and speaking out and asking lots and lots of questions. Being prepared is one of the most important things that we can be as public servants. Being prepared is one of the most important things that we can be as public servants in order to decide whatever it is that we need to decide and being respectful. It doesn't, all of us have a voice. We don't always have to agree on an issue, but I think that it is important that we respect the efforts of our colleagues who are also public servants on behalf of the City of Taunton. So I'm going to, I'm going to miss the work. I have other work, as you all do, to go on to, and I look forward to that time to come. But this has been very important to me. So I'll be hovering around on the edges whenever there is an opportunity to be a presence in the Taunton Public Schools, going to various activities. I certainly will do that. And thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Cabral, Mr. Souza, Mayor, and my wonderful colleagues for the opportunity to work with you. And welcome to, Mr. George. Thank you.
Before I turn it over to my colleagues that are remaining, I just have a few words to say. First of all, I have to thank my family. Twelve years is a long time. And I've been here for twelve years. It's been an amazing run. I've served under four mayors. And I just want to say, thank you to the current mayor for your encouragement and your words of wisdom. It's been a long two years and we, other episodes up the, on the edge of breaking through and getting rid of COVID. So we've done a great job, you and the superintendent, and we've done a great job together. So congratulations on that. And my former colleagues, my current colleagues, I've served under two superintendents. Mr. Cabral, you battled COVID and you're going to win it. So congratulations. It's been an honor to serve with you. My colleagues, it's been an honor, my pleasure. I just want to say a few words on the actual people that mean a lot to me, and that's the students. But certainly, we love all of our students, but the leadership team, there's none better. Chris Barata, Brenda Moynihan, Cheryl Butts, Kathy Perry, Amy Moynihan, you guys are the best. Always ready to go. Just the best. Thank you. I wasn't going to name names, but I just have to go there. You guys, you guys are the best in the business. You guys are just great. Our principals, our staffs, our teachers, just fantastic. Always student-centered, and we can't ask for anymore. A special thanks to the ladies in the front office that make this machine run the heartbeat of this machine every day. Wendy, Donna, Judy, Courtney, Annie Z. Anytime I had a question, any of us, you guys are the heartbeat of this building, the heartbeat of this district. Thank you. It's been an honor of a lifetime to serve for twelve years. I said that. I won't get emotional, but always remember my colleagues that are here and the colleagues that are coming in. Ask yourself one question and the votes will be very easy. How does it help kids? With that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues that are remaining. I'll start with, over here, Mr. Palowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Almeida, thank you very much for taking me from kindergarten to the school committee while you were on the school committee. I literally don't have a concept of the school committee without you on it. So I was truly one of your babies and I will do my best to take care of your babies as we go along. Mrs. Dougherty, thank you so much. You were the first person to offer me support and encouragement when I decided to run for school committee. I really appreciate that. And I'm grateful that the people of Taunton and the people of Easton still have you as their representative. Mr. Souza, thank you so much for being, for doing such a remarkable job as chairman, especially during these last two years, which are probably the most challenging two years you can imagine on the school board. And Mr. Martin, I want to thank just for being Mr. Martin. And all of you, really, like myself as a new, first-time school committee member, you all offered so much guidance and support through this. I always knew if I was confused about something, if I didn't know what to do, I could call up any one of you and get some guidance. So I'm appreciative of that. I'm grateful that we have the continued experience and guidance and support of Mr. Fiore, Mrs. Fagan, and Mr. DeMello. And I welcome Mr. George, Mr. Enos, Mr. Vera, and Mr. Laura to join us and continue doing this great work. So thank you very much.
The dean, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you. Actually, that title carries over from another job, but and it doesn't even apply anymore, but it's still. Well, it's kind of culture shock because we've had so little turnover on the school committee and well, I've been on the board fourteen out of the last twenty years. And all of a sudden, half of the new committee is going to be different. Fortunately, I have fourteen years on the, fourteen tumultuous years on the Taunton City Council before and in the midst of my service here. So I am used to change. And of the new people who are coming in, I've had the privilege of serving with Mr. Laura for two terms on that council. And I've been acquainted with the others, or in Mr. George's case, with the other's grandfather. And I'm also grateful that if we had to lose Mr. Martin, I'm very glad we have another competent professional educator to replace him. And I confess that I do not bullet vote and that I did cast my own ballot for Mr. George in this past election and I'm very glad to receive him here. My personal relationship with all of the departing members has been extraordinary. I've been a guest in Mrs. Almeida's home several times. She's been on the committee the whole time I have. And she was already on the committee when I first went on the council back in nineteen eighty-eight. Obviously, I've had very good relations with Ms. Dougherty and Mr. Souza and also the way Mr. Martin, who all at different times, because they lived in or near my neighborhood, had given me rides at different times. And all the great conversations and socializing that we've done over the years. And I hope that aspect of our relationship doesn't end. And I hope that I can enjoy the same kind of companionship with our new folks that I have with you. And when I ran for reelection, I offered to be a mentor to the new people. And I certainly want to be accepting and I certainly want to help in any way I can. And Mr. George is here, Mr. Vera was here. I want to say to all of you, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Mrs. Fagan.
Well.
Try to beat those.
Oh, I got something for all of you. I realized when everything shook out that this was going to be like being in my family, me and seven guys. Right? My husband and six sons, and now I'm going to sit here with seven guys and me. And I already knew what was happening tonight. Christine, can you get me a coffee? Can you grab me one of those? And so I already know what's going on. It's just like at home. So I think I'll be entirely comfortable with all of you guys. And just remember, one thing I learned from all my boys and my husband are what all of you are all about. So I've already got your number. I know. So I'm looking forward to the dynamics. So when you're here, I won't be the only female there.
I was going to say, I'll be here for you.
I know. I'll be here for you too, because this could be something else. I, you know, I realized after everything was said and done, I've really enjoyed this job. People say to me, you're still on that school committee? People say, you're still on? I said, well, don't you watch anything? Of course I'm still on. You know, I bet the graduations, all those different things. I love being here. I think it's important that we have a diversity of opinion. I think we do better when we do have that. And I've often looked at things a little bit differently based on the background that I have and, you know, haven't had children go through this system. And I'll tell you what, they have all been the best things of my life, haven't the kids here. I'm not from Taunton originally. I grew up in the town of Somerset. So I was the small-town girl, not the uptown girl, when I moved to Taunton. But, you know, to come into a community where you don't know anybody and over the years develop relationships that, in the course of the past twenty-six years, I've been elected to this school committee, it makes me feel good that I got accepted here, because this wasn't my hometown. So I'm always thankful to the people of Taunton. But I look at how well my kids are doing because they got to come here and have all the benefits that they had here in the system and all the opportunities that they had. And I think about all the wonderful teachers they have. And, you know, in this job as secretary the past couple of years, it's been very sad. There hasn't been, I think, very few meetings that I wasn't doing a eulogy for somebody. We have lost a lot of wonderful people. And what makes me smile the most is when my kids start talking about how much fun they had here. When I told one of my sons that Mrs. Derubio had just passed away, he says, I can still remember her going down in that tennis skirt to coach the tennis stuff. And I said, was Mr. Derubio still the athletic director? When you were there? He said, yeah. He said, you know, I think the last year I played football at the high school. It went to Jack Marvisey and Gus had retired. And all of a sudden, this big smile goes across his face and he says, Ma, you remember the movie Grease? I said, yeah. He said, remember the guy that was the athletic director? Sid Caesar? He said, that was Mr. Derubio. Because he was, it's, you know, he loved everything. He was all about Taunton High, all about painting everything black and orange, the enthusiasm he brought to the kids. And, you know, it's nice to realize the impact that so many of the teachers in here have had on the lives of my own children. And I've always been eternally grateful for that. I couldn't have been luckier to be on this committee. I got on when my youngest one was, you know, he was born in nineteen ninety. But to just be here and be a part of this has been really nice. And even when I come over here just to drop something off, I say, God, I love this place because it's meant so much to my family to have had my kids come here and the friendships that we've developed over the years. I'm going to miss my colleagues that'll leave. And Jody Almeida and I have been the two longest ones together on this committee. She's been a wonderful friend. I miss her and I'm going to miss her and I'm going to miss all you. David, you and I have had a lot of fun together, particularly when I had the broken shoulder. I'll try not to do that again.
Yeah, don't do that again.
And, you know, I just appreciate where we've all been. And even though we've had disagreements, Carol, we've always maintained a friendship. So, you know, but I think it's good for the conversation that we all have these conversations. So I'm looking forward to working with what's going to be like having my other second family with all of you men. And I think we're going to have a good time. We just have to, you know, we have to kind of, it's different. I mean, I know we had one member that's already been here, but he was here pre-ed reform, so some of that stuff's different. So it's going to be a learning curve for everybody. But we'll pull together and do the best we can because it really is all about helping this community and helping the children in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me begin by just saying thank you to my colleagues that are leaving us or have departed us unfortunately, for your service, your dedication to the students and to the community that we serve. As a fairly new member, I've learned a lot. The wealth of knowledge has sunk into me a little bit from Mr. Martin on the finance side and from other folks that contribute to the board. And I have a bone to pick with some of you, well, one of you in particular. So when I first got on, Mrs. Almeida invited me to her home and made a wonderful breakfast of quiche and some muffins and everything else that went with it. Mr. Souza bought me coffee and donuts at Dunkin' Donuts on Broadway. Mr. Martin pitched in, he was frugal, a coffee at Colonial Donuts. And Mrs. Dougherty used to loan me a cup of coffee. So I'd like to cash in on that sometime soon. But in seriousness, we're losing a wealth of knowledge, but we're gaining a lot of knowledge too. Mr. George, Mr. Vera, Mr. Laura, Mr. Enos, I look forward to working with. Mrs. Fagan, fear not us, we are going to behave, I can assure you, okay? And thank you so much for your service and I look forward to serving the students and the community in January third and going forward. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. I've really appreciated my first two years on the school committee as mayor. And what I've appreciated the most are the friendships that I've made and the collaborations and partnerships that I've seen materialize all around our community. I have also learned a lot from our families, from our students and kids, and from my colleagues. And I very much appreciate that. This body is very collegial and that is something that makes these meetings much more pleasant and productive. And I think that someone everybody appreciates, especially the community and those watching us. So I'm grateful for the past two years. I'm looking forward to the next two years. And I think Taunton has done very well these past two years and we are a very blessed community in many ways for many different reasons. And I especially want to thank Mr. Souza for helping me through all of these meetings with a little bit of a learning curve. They're a little bit different than my city council meetings. And he's here whispering in my ear all the time and helping me along and I greatly appreciated that, David. And of course, Mrs. Fagan, Christine, you've been a great friend to me these past two years and helped me a lot as well.
You've been to me as well, thank you.
So it's a great board here and I'm glad to be a part of it. And of course, Superintendent Cabral, I want to say that I really appreciate your open door and your communication and the collaboration on the city side and the school side. It's so important and it's something that is very much needed for our kids and our families and our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been an honor. I'll let the superintendent has a few final words. I'll let him say that. But it's been an honor and it's been a tough two years for all of us. The leadership from your administration and the administration here in the school department has been a great collaborative effort. Mr. Cabral.
So Mrs. Dougherty would be happy to know that I have three different buckets that I'm, so I can keep things in order, Carol. So Mrs. Almeida, Carol, David, and you already know how I feel about Mr. Martin and what he meant to me as an administrator and as a person. So Carol, I really enjoyed our conversations, our passionate, sometimes heated conversations, but they always ended with a hug. So I always appreciated that about Carol, that, you know, she's a great listener. She's very open and receptive. And even though we might not always agree on the topics, in the end, they always ended very collegially. And so I'm indebted to you and for what you stand for. And don't ever change, Carol. Mrs. Almeida, what can I say about Jody? I think I've known Jody since my days at Freeman or maybe even my days at Kohanet. Jody, I will continue to take care of our babies. I'm very excited to announce that we will have a, we will be extending our pre-K program sometime in January with a plan to have a neighborhood model, hopefully within the next year. So that's work that we are very passionate about and that is something that we will continue. And you have left a lasting legacy on the Taunton Public Schools, Mrs. Almeida. David, thank you for helping me keep my hair these last two years. It's been great to plan through these meetings and what you have endured, what you have endured personally and professionally in helping to lead this district with a steady hand, but to lead this committee with a steady hand through the last two years. I don't think anyone will really have a true grasp of what it was like for you and your family these last two years. So thank you. So to Greg, Christine, Jordan, and Nathan, what I can say is what has made this committee strong and what has allowed us, I feel, to be a model urban district in southeast Massachusetts is the stability and the continuity that sits at this table. So we have four members graduating and I think you have graduated because you are now the senior members. So we have a lot of work to do to continue the strong legacy that we have established here as a school system. And I think about what Dr. Hackett said years ago, when I think we were reading the book, The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. We're a family. We're going to laugh, we're going to argue, we're sometimes going to say things that might upset each other. But in the end, we're a family and that's what families do. We put whatever issues we have behind us, we come to this table and we do what's right for this community. So I look forward to working with you and seeing you step up as leaders of this committee as we welcome Louis Laura, Stephen Vera, Gil Enos, and Derek George. Derek George, for those who don't know. Gil Enos, and Derek George. Derek George, for those you don't know, and I know I have this youthful charm about my, Derek was one of my first students when I started here in Taunton back in 1998. So yes, I do feel old today. I'm excited to have someone like Gil sitting on the school committee and helping to advocate on the city side for the school department. So I look forward to working with Mr. Enos to make sure that our students in our schools continue to maintain a high level of success. And Mr. Vera, with students in the school system, and Louis Laura, knowing how passionate he is about the Porches community and first-generation students in our schools. I think we have a very nice mix of ideas. And I like what Mrs. Fagan mentioned, or I think it might have been Carol. I forget. I wasn't taking notes. But the fact that we have stability, continuity, and that we continue to be receptive to new ideas is what's going to lead us and continue to make us a model school system and a model city in southeast of Massachusetts. Before you run away, my elves were busy last night. So we have a little something for every school committee member once the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. We appreciate those comments. There is no press time. There's no press here. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
Motion made, second. All those in favor? Paws, the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.